This meeting was called in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. At this time, we're still operating pursuant to Governor Abbott's executive order of GA 23. And in consultation with Lano County Health Authority, the commission court will be closed to protect the public staff and members from potential exposure to the coronavirus. We've got the public able to listen and dial in. We'll start with a roll call with Commissioner Jones, if you would announce.
Yes, Commissioner Peter Jones, precinct one, present.
Linda Rosky, precinct two, present.
Commissioner Sanzval, Dr. Don.
Yes, sir. Very done, Moss, Commissioner, precinct four, present.
Okay, I will start with the pledge of allegiance, if you would, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Indivisible, with liberty.
And justice for all.
And I don't have a Texas flag. Oh, we did. Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to Texas.
One state under God and the land of the individual.
So we've had to announce the call for public sign up. Don't have anyone. We've got the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
If nobody's, if nobody's pulling anything, I'll vote that we, or move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Peter Jones, a second by Commissioner Rosky. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Agenda item number four, update and discussion on Lano COVID-19 response, including Lano County emergency declaration, a report on the information received from the Office of the Governor and TDM, and the Lano County Local Health Authority. So it'll be myself, Dr. Franklin, and Gilbert Bennett. So, Dr. Franklin, you're up.
Good morning. The, we are essentially very close to the same position we were in two weeks ago. We still have only three recovered cases in Lano County. We have nobody that is, we have no, had not had any active cases at all since we last met. The local area has also calmed down somewhat in the last week. The, the five local health authorities that I'm in contact with around us, which are San Saba, Burnett, Blanco, and Lampasas Counties, we've only had four cases in the last week, which was a pretty significant slowdown from weeks previous. The, like I say, thus far, active cases, we seem to be doing well statewide. I know Gilbert's gonna go into some detail on some other numbers, but the big number that I normally look at is the number of hospitalizations for COVID-19. That number has stayed stable as we have, as the reopen Texas plan has continued. So I don't think we're seeing the overwhelming numbers there. As far as testing in Lano is concerned, the, the TDM, not the TDM, the military testing that was done in Kingsland is still not back from a week and a half ago. We still don't have a final result there. The governor has asked that we look into testing all nursing homes and assisted living facilities. The first round is supposed to be nursing homes, then they're supposed to, I think, come back and do assisting living facilities. We are looking into trying in Lano County to do all five facilities at one time to try to minimize the disruption in services as much as possible. More to come on that. The, things are about, about the same. That's my, my best report.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Franklin?
Dr. Franklin, I do. What are the, what do you, you know about what time, how much time you spend a week on, on this?
It has certainly, excuse me, coffee got in the wrong place, sir. The, it has certainly decreased in the last week. When we first started off back in March and early April, I was probably doing four or five conferences per day between conferences with the state, conferences locally. Each of those were lasting about an hour. With the three cases, each one of those probably took about three to four hours of staying on the phone, trying to find contacts, trying to get things under control. But I would say about, it was four to five hours a day initially. Currently, today is a big day for me because I have two, two one-hour meetings. That's, that's the, that's the hope that that's it.
Well, I, I just, I didn't know myself, and I didn't know, didn't know if anyone else did either, but I appreciate, appreciate.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for what you're doing for Lano County.
Gilbert, you want to follow up?
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Just to give you an update on the State Operations Report, in the state of Texas, the Texas count is 55,971. We have 1,527 fatalities. We've had 35,292 recovered. And currently, we have 22,662 active cases in the state of Texas. And I will send this to each of you Commissioners, so I'll give you my cliff notes as well. But the Texas Military Department has 3,197 members working on the event currently. Texas Task Force, the emergency task force, is activated in all eight regions. The DPS, Department of Public Safety Aviation, has flown 185 flights. The State Operations Center has received 111 attestations from county judges out of the 254. The Texas Commission on Fire Protection is working with the fire departments throughout the state of Texas, making sure they're taken care of. PEC is the incident support at the armory with PPE. TDM is preparing the situational reports. This past week, there hasn't been a whole lot of situational reports activated or given. The Texas Parks and Wildlife Game Wardens have been known as the Pony Express, delivering all the test samples from all the test sites. Lano County, we have actually closed the EOC in, in, basically at the EOC. We have moved all the distribution of equipment over here to the tax office so we can distribute it as needed here from the logistics. And we'll keep it open virtually, really, just kind of keeping our hand on what's going on throughout the state of Texas. But as far as reporting to the EOC each morning, I've kind of, do half and half days now, so. We are pending notification from the HHSC, Health and Human Services Center, on testing at the nursing homes and assisted living centers. We are identified as a county that needs assistance in the testing environment, so they have identified us as that. We will receive notification three days in advance before they arrive to do the testing. We've provided each facility through Dr. Franklin the assessment form so they can evaluate each facility. We do not have any positive cases, so we're not real high on the list at this time. So we're waiting to hear back from them and from the State Operations Center on that. We have been developing the equipment list and the funding through the CARES Act as directed by County Judge Ron Cunningham. This past weekend, the National Weather Service issued a thunderstorm warning back at eight o'clock PM. So our focus has been a little bit on the weather through the state operations. That's all the report I have.
Thank you, Gilbert. Anybody have any questions for Gilbert?
No.
Okay, just, just a quick rundown. We still have conversations with the EOC. We've got Jack Franklin on there. You know, when all this first fired up, we were doing conference calls every morning at nine o'clock. And then once, once we've started getting our feet under us, now we've moved those to just Tuesdays and Thursdays. And we've got, we've got a good group of folks doing it. The, the PPE that Gilbert was talking about, it is your mask, it's your gowns, it's your hand sanitizer. What you're seeing on your screen right now is, is the, I guess, the on-hand supplies. For those of you who haven't seen it, it's stored here at the county above, on the floor above Gilbert's office. When I checked with Gilbert, it's, it's, it's probably, what would you say, Gilbert, a week's supply of PPE?
If we were using it daily, it'd probably last us about a week.
So, and in the, in the very beginning, when all of this was starting, everyone was competing with each other, with counties were competing with counties, cities with cities, everybody was competing with everybody, trying to accumulate and store this stuff in preparation for what we thought was going to be a pandemic sweep across, you know, the entire state like we saw sweeping across New York. The state of Texas has done a great job of getting their feet under them. The state of Texas has got a much more adequate supply of this equipment, and now we can do what is called a star request, where we can request this information, this, this PPE or whatever we need, if we need shots or testing or whatever. So we're getting that from the state now, whereas before we were having to set up and, and buy all this stuff on our own, or receive it through donations, which is a lot of where that came from. So I just say all that to say that the, Gilbert and his team, Dr. Franklin, and Bobby Mams, and James Brown, and all those folks have done a fantastic job of getting us equipment and having it on hand. And also want to point out that the social media team that we created back in November, they've done a great job at getting all of the information out to everybody. It's, it's been, they've done a phenomenal job at making sure that as we get information, it is put out to the public. I don't have anything else on agenda item four. Do y'all have any Commissioners, do y'all have any questions of me or anyone else?
No.
No, sir.
Okay, so that was, then we'll close agenda item four.
I'm sorry?
Judge, I'll share with one, one thing I didn't share in our court, in our huddle meeting, but the DSHS has reported that we've had 446 persons tested in Lano County. So that's up from their 325, or whatever they had reported before. And that is posted. So, but we haven't, we've received word this morning that we're still at zero in Lano County.
Yeah, I'll let everybody know, all of those tests, they, they, they come from, they can come from 17 different doctors in Lano County. They can go to four different facilities to get tested. And we're not like the local health authority in, say, Travis County and Austin, where they, they all funnel into the system. So we're only going to hear when any of those 446 come back as a positive. We don't hear when the tests come back as a negative. But as soon as we get the daily update and find something out, we put it out to the public. So with that, we'll close agenda item four, move on to five. Discussion, action, extending and modifying the Declaration of Local Disaster for Public Health Emergency COVID-19, currently set to expire on May 29th, 2020. The court may also amend and modify the emergency management plan that was activated on March 20th, 2020. The modification, discussion, and action may include necessary additional emergency measures to assure the health and safety of Lano citizens and visitors of Lano County. These modifications, as additions, may be added to the declaration and/or the emergency management plan. Right now, I don't, I mean, right now, truly, we have our, our feet under us, I think, for the time being. We don't know where this pandemic is going in the state of Texas. One of the things that we could do is, we know that it will pop back up. So what I would suggest is, is maybe that we just extend it through December 31st and go from there so we don't have to keep coming back.
Good idea.
Good, fair enough. Judge, this, this order, now this puts us in a position of being able to qualify for any recovery of some of the COVID costs, as well as maintains just this declaration just in case. I guess that's what we need. Is that right?
Yes, sir. But that's all it's doing right now, is keeping it on the books. And I don't, I don't really know if, if, Matt, do you know if it, if we, if we don't do it, does it, I don't know how it impacts us if we don't. I think it's just the, the safe thing to do, is just keep the declaration.
Yeah, so. It presents a problem for qualifying for federal money if we somehow or other say we're not in a, in an emergency situation. So it's, that's just to cover us for purposes of qualifying. But it also allows you, the court, and the judge to take steps if, God forbid, this, this COVID rears its ugly head again here in the county, so.
I think that's the concern, is that we've seen in, in Mason, we've seen in Burnett, that it can go from zero to 25 or 30 over a matter of days. We want to be able to respond accordingly.
Right. So you just need a motion to extend to December 30, 2020?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, I'll make such a motion.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Again, Commissioner Sandoval is not present today. Agenda item six, discussion, action, Lano County acceptance of funds made available from Coronavirus Relief Fund, the CARES Act, and establish a Lano County COVID-19 fund. Cindy, do you want to talk about that one?
Well, there's, there's two different things. And so in order to avoid any confusion, the memo that I sent to Commissioners Court regarding the true budget amendment has nothing to do with the COVID relief fund. It has to do with tracking on our general ledger currently for what, what we're spending right now. So I want to make sure that that's clear. But what we're doing is setting up a fund for when we do receive that money, we have a place to put it, and then we'll come back to Commissioners Court to establish a budget.
So can we do that by this agenda item, Cindy?
I don't think we can do the true budget amendment by this agenda item unless we want to consider it as part of agenda item number four under the emergency. But my memo to Commissioners Court has nothing to do with the federal money that we're talking about.
So is that, was that the one about the, the true budget amendment memo?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Cindy, on this, on this relief fund, I read this correctly, it looks like that the, the potential to Lano County, that $55 per capita allotment with $20,000, which is about $1.1 million. Is that, am I reading this correctly?
That's correct, but we have to be able to spend it for direct expenditures having to do with COVID-19. So that's why we'll have to come back to Commissioners Court to establish a budget for that money.
So do we first and then allocate it, or how, how does the process work?
What was your question?
Do we get the funds first from the feds, or do we have to spend it first to get recovery?
Well, the way they're just, they're going to disperse an upfront amount of about $177,000. And we can use that to reimburse ourselves for direct expenditures so far in the disaster. But we have to, the Commissioners Court has to establish a budget for that. And we'll do that once we receive the money. And then we can review all of the expenditures to date and determine for sure that they fall in line with what the grant is for.
So Cindy, with your memo, is there, have we made some purchases that, that you think are not going to be covered, or that, have we, is there, is there something out there that we've done that, that you think may not be covered?
I don't know, because I have to look at every single invoice and what, I'm not, we, Katie and I have not compared notes to see what she's tracking as far as COVID-19 versus what we've actually issued as purchase orders through my office. So I don't, we want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
So before we do this, would it not make more sense to sit down with, with Katie, and Dr. Franklin, and Gilbert, and figure out where the state is coming from on all this, and how we're, how we're spending it? I mean, I'm not, I don't think we spent anything that I'm aware of up to this point that, that hasn't been in, in line with purchasing.
No, but we need to track it correctly on our general ledger now before we can determine what's exactly falls in line with the grant. Right now, we've got expenditures that are being made through building maintenance, we've got payroll stuff, we've got supplies through Gilbert's office. All that should be in a department under Public Health Services in our general ledger, tracked altogether. Right now, it's all in different departments. So if we create the budget amendment, creating that department, and just specifically those expenditures that are actually part of the true public health emergency, then when we look at the grant, there'll be no question, once the grant comes, what we can reimburse ourselves for and what we can't.
Cindy, do you know if time spent on COVID-19 issues by any paid individual, elected officials or others in the county would qualify as a reimbursable amount?
I don't believe elected officials' time can be. It has to be a direct expenditure. You have to be able to say, here's the dollar amount, this is what I paid for.
I think, I think what Peter was asking was like, we had to specifically reassign Katie just to, just to track that stuff. And Jennifer, we had to reassign a lot of her time just to COVID when all this first started out. Is that what you were asking, Peter, if we can?
I think that, certainly any employee who has allocated work to COVID issue, but also elected officials have spent a considerable amount of time on this as well, which has been a cost. So does that qualify or not? I guess is my question. And I think Cindy just said she doesn't think so.
I don't believe.
I, I think we, we need to sit down as a, as a collective group with everybody that's been involved and make sure that everybody's on the same page going forward. I mean, it's, we were responding to a disaster, and we were kind of all working as quickly and fast as we could. But I think we need to sit back down and, and look at this and figure out how we're going to get smarter on it from the federal government aspect and the state government aspect. Because one thing that has happened is, all of the money that came from the federal government, there were, I think, eight counties that got that money directly with no stipulations on how they spent it. There are 248 counties that received right at $1.4 billion that was split amongst them, but it has specific stipulations on how you can spend it. And that's what we have to look at, is, is the, the court needs to, to get smarter on this. And, I mean, it, it came out on a, I think, last Monday, and it's, they're feeding it to us, feeding it to us through a fire hose on different days. And we've, we've got to get the Commissioners Court up to speed on how, how best to use that money before we start making any, I think, budget amendments or anything. That's just my thoughts.
Yeah, but I need a place to track it on our general ledger. We do not have anything in our general ledger that specifically says public health emergency. And this money that's coming from the federal government, if there's any place else in your budget that you can use that money, then you don't qualify. So without Commissioners Court saying we don't have anywhere else in our current budget that we can use these funds for, we're not going to be able to qualify. So by declaring a true budget amendment, there's nowhere else in our budget we can use the, we can find these funds, we're creating a separate department because of this emergency, then we won't be able to qualify all those expenditures.
Sure. So does the true budget amendment, you've got line items on there. Are those, are those the specific line items? Because when I looked at it, it's, it's not covering some of the stuff in the EOC.
I don't think that these, this money's used to be ramping up the EOC. We have to say it's directly related to COVID.
I guess my concern is that.
But the grant funds is something different. I'm talking about what we're spending right now. I don't think we're tracking it on our general ledger properly. We need to have it specific to what the expenditures are, and they're because of the public health emergency.
But Cindy, you're looking at establishing this budget amendment as a, like a separate line item bucket, I guess, for these COVID costs. And you won't know, we won't know to budget this until you know really what trend of costs are. But yeah, I think you're suggesting on this, $100,000 as a starting.
Hello, if you're the Office of Linda Rosky, Lano County Commissioner, precinct.
By looking at what we've spent so far, those three categories are what I can see from, from what we've spent, that most of the expenditures will fall in those three. And if, and if not, we can always come back at next court and say, well, we need to create another line item within that department to best clarify what we're actually spending.
Hello, if you're the Office of Linda Rosky, Lano County Commissioner, precinct.
So Judge, are you looking for a, a motion to accept funds that are available under the Coronavirus Relief Act and the CARES Act? Whatever funds may be coming, you want a motion under this agenda item for us to accept it? Is that?
Yeah, I think that's the only thing that Cindy and I were looking for on this one, was just to, just, I haven't signed the document saying we want that $177,000 yet. I wanted to run that by the Commissioners Court before I did that. I mean, it's, it's, they said it wasn't required, but I just, I think in full and open disclosure, you guys need to know if we're going to do something like that, if we're going to be accepting funds like that. I want to make sure that we're in agreement on it.
There is no reason for us to decline that, is there, in your mind? Or what, what reason would we have to decline acceptance, if any?
It's, it's different than category B from the FEMA funds. There's no 75% match. So a lot of the stuff that, that we've been doing, we can claim 100% reimbursement on. It, it doesn't really have a, I won't say it doesn't have a downside. Anytime you take money from the federal government, it's going to have a downside, it's going to have strings. But we just, we're not quite sure what they are. But I'm saying, if we, if we sign the document, say yes, we would like to receive those funds at this time, we need to take it step by step. And I don't, I don't want anybody on the call or any of the Commissioners or anyone thinking that we've, we've got full-blown intentions of how we're going to go out and spend $177,000 right now, because we don't. We, we need to figure out what the stipulations are and how we can best make use of it. And that, that's going to come as a, as a court, not as a, not, not just coming out of this officer, Gilbert's office, or Jack's office.
So we would need, first of, we'd need some kind of budgeting approach, which, which Cindy's working on. But also, there's a tracking system and a, and a monitoring system, and an allocation system or whatever, to make sure that we're spending no dollars for that stuff. And if we're audited, we can justify that. And we potentially could have to pay back some if we don't use it.
But that's why we need to sit down with Dr. Franklin, with Gilbert, with TDM, and with DSHS, to see what, what funds we actually need to spend money on, because the state is going to be supplying a lot of that stuff. So I don't want, I don't want us to receive these funds, spend them on something that the state was already doing anyway, and duplicate efforts, if that makes sense.
But at this point, if we just simply said, yeah, we'll accept the funds, and then work out those details later, is that doable, in your mind? Is that the right approach?
I think so. Cindy, what are your thoughts on it?
Yeah, and that's exactly what the local government code says, that once we receive the money, there's a certification on the, on the funds, and then Commissioners Court establishes a budget. And once we receive the funds, then, then we'll come back to Commissioners Court and say, okay, on the judge's recommendations, Gilbert's recommendations, these are the line items we need within that budget.
Okay. These funds are from the state, or they're from the federal?
From Treasury.
Okay. So this wouldn't be something, when these funds are going to take the place of, at a later date, FEMA money, right? There wouldn't be, you couldn't.
you couldn't pay for some of those things that, from the COVID 19 out of this fund and then other things that this doesn't cover at a later date with, turn that into FEMA. Is that correct?
I, I think we can. The, it doesn't matter if it, if it's the CARES Act fund or category B funds from FEMA from a disaster. There, there's going to be audits and there's a potential for clawback if we don't spend it correctly on either one. You can't duplicate, I think is what you were asking.
Yeah, no, I, no, I, I didn't think you could do that. No.
Is that what you were asking?
Well, uh, no, I, I couldn't duplicate that. I wasn't thinking that. I was just, it's the same, it's basically the same thing though. That, that we're just getting it now instead of in two years from now.
Well, I think that what the judge was trying to explain earlier is with the CARES Act funds, we reimbursed 100%. With FEMA, we're going to get 75%. So if we can qualify this stuff under the CARE Act fund, I think we're better off in the long run. The key is just to make sure we can justify everything that we spent. And we'd have to do that if it was FEMA anyway.
It's pretty specific, this, the information we have here on this CARES Act is pretty specific on what you can spend it on, I think.
Well, it's, it's specific from treasury, what you can spend it on. And then the state put even more mandates on it, on what we can spend it on. So we just, we, we need to, I think we're still early in the, in the game on, on figuring out how we're going to spend this. But it needs to be a calculated approach rather than just saying, yeah, we're going to take it and, and take off running with it, seeing what we need to, seeing what we think we need to buy versus looking down the road and planning on what we need to buy.
Well, and I agree too also that we need to make absolutely sure that we're tracking everything we're spending. That's going to be critical here, so.
Now Katie's, Katie's been doing that since, since day one. She's tracking the expenditure. She's also tracking the meetings. And we'll, we'll have a report for y'all on how many meetings and stuff we've had. I mean, we, we've been tracking it down to, you know, how many hours we're spending in meetings and stuff. So it's, we've got it all. We just need to get it all together. So Cindy can see it and the commissioners can see it.
Absolutely.
Do you think that, uh, she could, Katie could get with Cindy? Uh, nothing against Katie, but Cindy's been tracking Lano County stuff for 20 years. So it'd be good if they got together and made sure that, you know, everything is correct.
I think creating this department is going to be the key to track everything in one place and make sure that it's all running through the general ledger properly. I agree.
So the first step, Judge, is, is actually to approve the acceptance of these funds. Unless there's any more discussion, I'll make that motion that Lano County accept funds made available from the coronavirus relief fund, the CARES Act, and establish a Lano County COV fund. Is that, let me, before a second, is that Lano County COV fund what you're talking about, Cindy? Of this new department?
No, that's going to be, that's going to come after we receive the money. This is, this is what I'm talking about tracking right now for everything that we've spent so far having to do with COVID 19.
Okay, so that's separate. Okay. I made that motion then to at least accept the funds. So when you, when you say establish that Atlanta County COVID 19 fund, what does that mean?
It's a place to put the money when we get it.
I'll second this.
Doesn't mean we can spend it. We're just, we're just basically opening up a new account.
Right.
If you will. Yeah, no, I, I called it out. Okay, so we've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Being none all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Move on to agenda item seven, public hearings, discussions, approval of plants, replats, vacating of lots and lots. There are none. So we will move to agenda item eight, discussion action prohibiting or restricting outdoor burning in Lano County. Gilbert? Or Joe Don?
I feel with the current rain and where we are, the fire danger right now is currently very low. According to the state, uh, the forest service, I'll forward that information to you, uh, commissioners, but everything is low. Even the BDI, the KM, the index is low as well with the rain.
I'll motion to table.
I'll second.
Motion to table by Commissioner Rosky, second by Commissioner Moss. Any further discussion?
Just a point. Did you, did you not reinstate the burn ban, Judge? And then are we tabling?
I lifted it on.
You lifted the burn ban, so we.
Monday or Tuesday.
We had reinstated it and he lifted it. Right. So we're tabling the lifting?
No, we're, we're, it's off right now and we're tabling, putting it back on.
We're, we're tabling agenda item number eight, where it's nothing, no actions being taken on. We're not reinstating the burn ban. Okay. All right. Make sure we know what we're tabling.
Who seconded it?
I don't know.
Commissioner Moss.
Who, who made the motion?
I did.
Any further discussion? Being none all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Agenda item nine, determination of public purpose in the use of Lano County resources to provide logistical support for ministerial tasks in support of the Lano County Hospital Authority effort to assure all viable options for the delivery of healthcare services to Lano County residents are fully vetted. Becky, do you want to go or Cindy? One of y'all, whichever one of y'all wants to go.
I can take it, Judge.
Okay, go ahead.
So, um, the, as y'all are aware, the hospital authority has stepped, has stood up and they're in the process of figuring out what happens when the contract with Scott and White expires at the end of this year. And in the course of doing so, um, the, Cindy has brought to our attention and us paying attention to the fact that some actions are just naturally flowing where the county is having to, or has felt compelled to assist ministerially the authority moving on. And so there's some actions on the part of county, county employees on behalf or in support of that effort. And so what we wanted to do today is come back to the court with, of course, full transparency to say, this is not the county's action. This is the hospital authority action. But there is a public purpose in some of the, in the things that have happened. So some examples would have been, the, um, assigning a Lano County email address, listing the hospital authority board on our website, posting some of their meetings through our website. Jennifer, the judge's legal, uh, administrative assistant assisting, um, the authority and setting up some Zoom on their own. They got their own licensure and registration for Zoom, but helping them along their journey. I know I've been a part of some of their meetings in the past. I really don't go anymore. Um, I'm not their attorney, neither is Matt. They have hired outside counsel on their own. But what we need to do today, um, to bring to the court is that opportunity for the court of the Lano County Commissioners Court to say, yes, there's a public purpose and the commissioners being interested in the outcome of delivery of healthcare to this portion of Lano County. And that's, um, there's case law that supports that being a public purpose. We're not acting as the body making those decisions or the court is not. But we do need to just ratify the activity that's happened already on behalf of the hospital authority. So that's what we're here today is just asking the court to declare that public purpose and being supportive of the efforts of the hospital authority. The next step to this is there have to be limits in terms of what that is. We don't want, you know, the county to start funding a lot of things. And so basically, um, and I consulted with Bob Bass on this because he's been a part of these conversations with the hospital authority with us as we navigate this moving forward. And reminding you guys, the hospital authority is a political subdivision of the state of Texas, but it doesn't have, um, any taxing authority. And the commissioners' court does, does have the authority to set up this authority. And we did under chapter 264 of the Health and Safety Code. And so that's how we have a relationship with the hospital authority. Cindy reminded us that there was a settlement agreement that happened back in 2006 that came out of that lawsuit where the city of Lano sued the county as well as the hospital. That, the requirements under that settlement agreement have expired. It was a 10-year agreement. But still, I think it's important and appreciate that diligence to pay attention to that old finding that we make this all very transparent and above board, that actually the city of Lano has been a part of most of the meetings preliminarily. And they have access to all information about what's going on with the authority at this point in time. But basically, um, we're going to ask that you guys just approve or ratify that there is a public purpose and understand that we probably asking y'all to look at an interlocal agreement between the county and the hospital authority. We don't have that drafted at this time, but to set up those right and left boundaries moving forward. So that's even that much more transparent and clear. And Mr. Bass is helping us with that interlocal agreement as well.
There is, um, everyone on there is appointed by the, by the commissioners' court, is that correct?
They are, Joe Don.
I, I thought that we, we did kind of reaffirm that not too long ago, I, the judge with, with all, you did, I know you did most of that. I appreciate that again. But I, I don't understand really though what, because I know we support the hospital. I mean, it, it's in our, in our best interest. It's in our constituents' best interest that we have a hospital authority board and, and some sort of hospital and, and appreciate their efforts. But I'm, I'm kind of lost at why, why would we just vote to say we support them when we absolutely support them? I mean, that, we appoint these people to these boards, so we have to support them.
I, I think the, Cindy, you want to talk about the concerns you have?
It's just for us to establish a public purpose for our support behind them ministerially to, to get them back on their feet so they kind of have a direction where they need to go. Just establishing the commissioners' court's public purpose behind supporting the efforts of the, um, hospital authority board.
To, to remind you, what, what Becky was talking about, what we were doing is we felt it was in the best interest of the public to make everybody aware that the hospital authority board was meeting. So we're putting it on the Lano County website. There were, when we first started with Zoom, after COVID 19 hit, the, the hospital authority board was, was still standing up and challenged with, like us, with everybody else with, with meeting together. And so Jennifer helped them get the Zoom account going and everything. The hospital authority board bought their own Zoom account. But Jennifer was providing administrative assistance to ensure that the meetings ran smoothly. So that's, that's basically the extent of what the county was doing with the hospital authority board. They've been meeting independent. They've got their own attorneys and everything. To that extent, we just, we wanted to make sure that everybody understood how we were involved with this, with the city.
Judge, if you don't mind, um, Commissioner Moss specifically, and I think this is, um, you know, rightfully so, the genesis of Cindy's concerns. Article three, section 52 of the Texas Constitution prohibits the expenditure of public money for a private benefit. So we're just wanting to be, um, just make sure that everybody's totally clear that, um, we're not taking the tax money from the citizens of Lano and turning it into a, a private interest on behalf of any hospital. The hospital authority is a gov, a subdivision of the governmental entity, but not necessarily a private entity. But still, just for the sake of transparency, I believe it's in the best interest and prudent for us to do that as, y'all to do that as a court.
Okay, thank you.
And you support that effort, Cindy?
Absolutely.
Okay. I want to make sure we're all clear and that we, because this, this is very important.
So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, um, determine a public purpose in the use of Lano County resources to provide logistical support for ministerial tasks in the support of the Lano County Hospital Authority effort to assure all viable options for the delivery of healthcare services to Lano County residents are fully vetted.
I'll second that.
Another motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? Being none all in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Agenda item 10 is discussion only. As everyone knows, or most of you know, the hospital agreement with Scott and White and the hospital authority board expires December 31st of this year. The EMS contract does the same. And I've asked Tim Oles and, I'm sorry, I've asked Tim Oles to come in and, and just give us an update on where we are with the EMS contract. So Tim?
Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate having the time to spend to update you on where we are in EMS services. And thanks for supporting Lano County Hospital Authority. We have been actively working with them on what the future will be. So thank you for your support of that. I have a presentation here to kind of walk us through.
Who are you, Mr. Olds?
I'm sorry. I'm the president of Baylor Scott and White here in the Hill Country. So Lano Hospital, Marble Falls Hospital, the, uh, the clinics that we have in our four counties and the specialty clinic next door to the hospital. So that, that's the role that I play is to lead that effort for Baylor Scott and White here.
Okay, thank you.
Tim, did you have a presentation you wanted to show or?
I do, sir. I'm going to try to share a screen here and see how I do. All right. So you should see, do you see a presentation up there at this point?
Yes, sir.
All right, good. A few graphs and things to go over with you on this. So appreciate you having the time to go over where we are on EMS. Just wanted to let you know who we are, kind of the scope of things we do, and then, then some numbers as, as the county does financially support the emergency management services. So first of all, we operate three advanced life support mobile intensive care units. They are stationed in Buchanan Dam, in Kingsland and in Lano at the, at the hospital and across the street from the hospital. All three of those units operate 24 by 7. We have one paramedic and one EMT on each one of those units and provide advanced life support services, EKG, managing people's airways, IVs. We can take care of patients in nearly every situation in life. This shows the last three years of EMS runs and where they started from for 911 calls. So you can see on the left, 73% of 911 calls are transported. That means 27% we arrive on the scene and are able to help the person who made the call without, without transporting them, or they choose not to be transported. And so, uh, Lano is in the light blue bar, Kingsland Station is in the yellow blue bar and Buchanan Dam in the dark blue one. Calls have been going up a bit over the last, over the last three years. I think it's, it's pretty consistent with where the population lives and the number of folks in those given zip codes and close in to where those ambulances, ambulances live. But we do two different kinds of, of runs. One is to be dispatched for 911. The other is to be dispatched for transport. Our transports, um, transports are largely from Lano Hospital to a higher level of care. So EMS may, may stabilize someone in the field, bring them to Lano Hospital. Sometimes they can be taken care of and, and just taken care of at the emergency room at Lano Hospital. And sometimes they require a high, higher level of care. So these are those transports. It, it gives you an idea that, you know, some, somewhere around two transports a day are from Lano Hospital to a higher level of care somewhere in the region. So our total runs for all, all different runs are around 3,341. That's through calendar year 2019. I'll share with you a bit, a little bit of year-to-date data here in a moment. So it's about nine runs per day between the three, between the three squads. This is just a map showing, you know, This is just a map showing, you know, dot represents a run, giving you a feel for the, feel for the geography of, of where we are. Of course, these are the Lano runs in this area, Buchanan Dam ones out here, and Kingsland Sunrise Beach over in this area here. Our response time, even for a pretty geographically dispersed rural area, less than nine minutes in Lano and Kingsland is our target. We hit that about over eighty percent of the time. Buchanan Dam, we have a little larger target because it's a little more real estate to cover. Hit less than fourteen minutes in seventy-eight percent of the time. This is kind of where the rubber meets the road on, on EMS services and wanted to make sure that you all had a good understanding of what the revenues and expenses engaged. Are part of this process and the support that the county provides. And how the federal government, at least through the DISTRIP program, and I'll explain that in a moment. Helps to multiply that support to support our Lano County efforts. So this is based on Baylor Scott and White fiscal years, which are July through June. And, uh, so two thousand and seventeen, we had about one point four million in revenues. That's the amount that we could bill insurance companies or individuals for the services for each run. In two thousand and eighteen, one point six, one point five last year. This, this year, we're annualized at about one point three. We've also seen an impact from COVID in terms of people's willingness to use emergency services. So we've seen a drop off in the last few months. Expenses have been fairly consistent over the last three years. What's included in expenses is our medicine, our supplies, our fuel. By far, the biggest piece of that puzzle is our labor, having three teams of respondents around the clock, always active. It also includes repairs, rent where we have to rent space, utilities and billing. What it does not include are some Baylor Scott and White overheads. So if this was a freestanding department, these are expenses it would incur. Legal, insurance, depreciation, accounting, administration, those overheads are not allocated back to this, to this department. So our operating margin for the last three years has been at about a three hundred thousand dollar loss. Uh, this year will be a little higher unless we see squad runs pick up. Because quite honestly, our costs are pretty fixed with labor being the biggest part of our costs. And then there's a fair amount of capital spent each year, so we buy squads. Two years ago, we bought an emergency response vehicle. Two years ago, we had to replace some engines and do some major capital upgrades to some older pieces of equipment. Uh, so our, our net, our net cash out for the service from a Baylor Scott and White perspective. Is a little more than a half million dollar loss per year. Now, what we've been able to do with the county over the last five years is participate in a Medicaid waiver program. When the Accountable Care Act came in place, some states expanded Medicaid. Some others participated in Medicaid waiver programs. Where Medicaid would grant monies to the states in exchange for improved outcomes for Medicaid patients. And we've worked hard in our region to improve the healthcare for Medicaid recipients and participate in that waiver program. For us, it's called DISTRIP, the Delivery System Reform Incentive Payment Program. And in exchange for lowering blood pressure rates, improving, improving. Uh, diabetes care, well child checks, maternity care for patients. If we, and we have shown improvement year over year. Uh, the federal government allows us through an intergovernmental transfer for the county to lift up to the federal government. On average, over the last five years, about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year. The federal government puts a multiplier on that, which comes back to Baylor Scott and White in the form of district payment. So that's this line here, four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar, that's the average amount. It has bounced around from a hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand, all depends on the timing of the year when they make their payments. But on average, last five years, this is how this has played out. And so it has left us just a little short each year to operate the Lano EMS, uh, portion. On average, for the last five years, about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in funds get intergovernmental transferred. So we both get a fairly good deal on that. We get, we get a, a real nice multiplier from the federal government. That program has a two-year life cycle in it. We're in year nine, there's one more year to it. Uh, the funds come out after the life cycle of the year. So it'll be summer of twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty-two, when we see the last district funds coming back to the counties, states. And these programs take a variety of different views throughout, throughout the country. I'm gonna pause there because it's fairly complicated and, and allow you to ask any questions you have about the finances. And about the district funding, anything that I might be able to answer for you.
The, um, the additional vehicle, the, I think it's the response vehicle you call it. Though somewhat was did by, um. I'm not sure it's the ho, the hospital authority or somewhere was there. There's another vehicle, another manpower, isn't there, in addition to the three ambulances?
Yes, I'll, I'll go over the ambulances in just a moment, but yes, that vehicle was funded by the Lano County Hospital Authority. And the Lano County Healthcare Foundation, those two entities funded the emergency response vehicle. Very appreciated. Would think of more questions, I can come back to these. Here is the, here is the equipment. We just received this new shiny squad, you see parked underneath the, underneath the canopy there at the EMS. Entrance to the emergency room, a twenty-twenty Ford with just a few hundred miles on it. We have a two thousand and seventeen Ford truck, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, two thousand and sixteen with two hundred and twelve thousand. We have a real workhorse and a two thousand and ten Chevy with four hundred and fifty-one thousand miles on it. And we have a van that was granted to us or lent to us by the Scott White over in Temple. That has a hundred and forty-five thousand miles on it, it's a reserve unit for us. And the two thousand and eighteen supervisor command vehicle that's come to us. The, the workhorses of the organization are these, are these trucks. They are heavy duty, um, made to be ridden long distances on rural roads. And keeping our staff safe as we do that, you can see, of course, the, the safety grids on the front of those trucks. And so that we have a, we have a brand new person to our fleet. It takes about eighteen months or so to get one of those in when you order it. Quite a, quite a backlog on ordering those vehicles. In the future, we'll need a truck in two thousand and twenty-one and another likely in two thousand and twenty-three as the vehicles time out. If you, as you, if you look at some of the publicly held EMS services, like Burnet just had an article in the paper a few weeks ago. About replacing their trucks that had two hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. Well, we, we run them for a little longer than two hundred and fifty thousand miles out here. Uh, just because we keep them well maintained and are able to do that. Will also may require a new base station depending on what happens with the hospital and the hospital lease. That's where our base station is now, is inside the walls of the hospital. One of the things for the future and one of the advancements that's happened with COVID nineteen is quite an escalation of telemedicine services. And so one of our advancements to the future is something we're calling community paramedicine. Sometimes it's called mobile integrated health, being able to add telemedicine to our EMS services. That for onsite care and secondly, for use with reaching out proactively to senior citizens. Who might have chronic diseases and be able to manage them in their home. Those folks that may frequently use services that if we can check in with them more often. Uh, we might be able to keep them from actually needing, needing a run to the hospital or elsewhere. So community paramedicine is something that we have been doing in the, in the Temple region. And are refining that process, getting that able to bring out to the Lano area as well. Just some of the strengths, I don't know how well you know, I know many of you know our organization, some more or less. But just to give you a sense of some of the things that I think give, make us a strong partner for the county. Now, we've got a long history of, of solid training and quality of care for our patients and a nice long-term relationship with the county over ten years now. We have good community satisfaction, we work well with our patients that come in as well as other emergency responders. We're very fortunate to have board certified emergency medicine physicians in the locations where our patients are transferred to. Most of the time in the Baylor Scott and White facility, so they're getting the highest level of care. And in Temple, we even have an emergency medicine training program, so we train physicians in, in Temple and emergency medicine. All of the Baylor Scott and White facilities are trauma certified, including Lano. Level one, two, or four, Lano and Marble Falls are level four, so is Lakeway. Uh, Round Rock is a level two and Temple is a level one trauma center. And McLean Children's in Temple is a level three pediatric trauma center. One of the real benefits for our patients throughout the region is that we have integrated records for them. So the records of EMS runs are, are available on our epic electronic medical record system. Both the inpatient physicians and our outpatient physicians see what's going on with them. And while large Baylor Scott and White continues to be a not, not-for-profit organization. Uh, we are very mission focused versus margin focused, we don't have a return for shareholders. Philosophy for our organization, every dollar earned over and above our expenses is reinvested in our community. And from a not-for-profit, uh-huh, not-for-profit ambulance service perspective, as I've been able to do some comparisons. We are a pretty low-cost provider compared to our other non-for-profit colleagues. You know, so well, just in closing, I have two things for you, just so you're, you're clear. Our intention is to continue to provide advanced EMS services for Lano County. We'd like to continue our relationship, like to continue doing what we do there. And our ask is to extend our contract, making the most of the next couple of years of district funding. And if the county needs to do a, a bidding process on, on emergency services. And obviously, that's, that is with, within your, uh, within your wherewithal. Uh, we would like to participate in any kind of a transparent bidding process. But we'd like to be here to stay to make a difference, continue to make a difference for the community. So those are, uh, those are some of the highlights of our service. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about that.
Are there any possibilities that the district will continue after two thousand and twenty-two?
That's a great question and one we are all wondering, um, what the answer to that will be. The state of Texas gets billions of dollars through this Medicaid eleven fifteen. And there are a broad variety of programs from skilled nursing facilities to, um, to safety net hospitals. To these kind of healthcare improvement programs with DISTRIP that are funded throughout the state, mental health and a number of other areas. It would be a huge impact on healthcare, especially for those who can't afford it. If, if the eleven fifteen waiver completely goes away. That said, the federal government is in really difficult straits right now. And the current Medicare, Medicaid CMS services is not a fan of these programs. So I'm not exactly sure what's going to happen for the future. There will be lots of lobbying going on in the next twenty-four months as this comes closer to an end. Is there a possibility it will continue? Yes. Is there a possibility it will change formats? Yes, it's very much a possibility it will change formats. So, um, wish I had a crystal ball that wasn't all fogged up, but right now it's not terribly clear to be able to give a specific answer. And Baylor Scott and White participates in DISTRIP through a broad variety of things. And it will be huge to us in our service for especially our communities that are really at risk throughout the system. So we are certainly going to be one of those people saying, help us continue to support our communities.
Absolutely.
Mr. Oles, based on, on that comment. Uh, if we, if you're bidding again to renew the contract. How do you, how would you address the fact that sometime during that contract? The district funding may or may not be available. And, uh, then I would expect the county would have to find a way to determine how to make up that shortfall. And it's kind of an awkward thing for us and you, I'm sure, yeah.
It is an awkward thing and, and we've had several conversations with the Lano County, County Hospital Authority. And a preceding group that helped sort out some of the details about this. One of the, one of the differences in Lano County is there isn't an emergency services district that support the western half of the county. There isn't a hospital district like there is in over half of the counties in Texas that support these kinds of things. So it, it, it's a challenge to say, how do we use regular general funds to support some of these emergency services? And the healthcare needs of our community. The way we have our current contract written is that if we get into a position where the, where the EMS is losing dollars. And there's a threshold, I believe, built into that, we get to have a pause together and have a discussion about what are we going to do going forward? You know, do we reduce the number of, of locations we have serving the county? Do we look at other ways to build revenues to support the service? But we put a, uh, but we put a safety net in there, a circuit breaker, if you will. Uh, to allow us together to kind of sort through what, what can we do to make this go and make it, make it still provide a service to the county. So I would propose we do a similar kind of thing. Here's, here's where we are, if we get into a situation where we don't have funding, well then we pause together and figure out what, what are we going to do? For the future for that and, and give ourselves a long enough runway that if there's, if there's, can, if there needs to be a change. If there's enough time for us to work through that process.
Thank you, Tim. Does anyone else have any questions for Tim? Okay, I, I felt like it was really important that we get Tim on here and get this information out, especially since we got budget workshops coming up on Agenda Item twelve. But it's just, it's, it's one of those things where it's all got one, one directly impacts the other. But thanks again for that presentation, Tim.
Thank you, I'll stop sharing.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you.
On the screen. Thank you, I appreciate your time today. And just, if anybody has any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. Jennifer's got all my contact information as, as Judge does. Judge Cunningham, I'm happy to respond to phone calls, emails, whatever comes across your desk, please feel free. And I'm usually in Lano about a day a week, um, at the hospital there and an office at Lano Hospital. So that varies a little bit, but I'm happy to meet with anyone face to face as well. So thank you all for what you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
We're grateful for that, we're grateful to Thomas Goodwin and his team, the EMS crews for doing all they do, especially during this COVID nineteen situation. You guys stay safe out there.
I will do that, thank you.
Yeah.
With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item eleven, discussion action on the CDL drug and alcohol policy for Lano County. And the all-employee drug and alcohol policy for Lano County. We've got Commissioner Moss, you want to take that?
Not really, we, um, I, I know, we'd all kind of wanted it on the agenda and wanted a workshop. I, I asked for a workshop the last time and that's why, one reason it wasn't approved, but looks like these are gonna be our workshops anyhow. So, uh, I had met with Lisa and Cindy, uh, I don't remember, one day, maybe a week or so ago. And we went over this stuff and talked about it and, and Judge, you had asked what commissioner or who had been helping with this and I took that hint, so. You know, we went over it and. So, anyhow, we went over it, and Lisa had been working with the, with TAC. Spent a lot of hours, a lot of time on this, going over it and back and forth with the TAC people. And it's basically the same as it was when, when Becky presented it to us. There is a, there's part of it that I don't really care for, and, and we'll get to that in a little bit, but know that Cindy and Lisa are both here to talk about or answer any questions, I guess. Lisa?
And I've got Richard Wooton in here with me. Y'all have any questions? And Larry, X is supposed to be online. I don't know.
Larry's on there.
Okay.
So, any questions?
So, this, this portion is just the CDL drug alcohol portion, correct?
No.
It was a recommendation to separate the CDL policy.
Right.
Policy.
I thought today's purpose was to discuss the entire thing. Am I wrong?
No, I think it is. Yes. It's the CDL and the, and the employee policy.
Right.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Policy that's not going to improve by the court. We're trying very hard to help you guys get that done.
Becky, I can't hardly hear you.
I'm sorry. I'll step up a little bit. I'm, I'm behind him, so he's more exposed to me than. I have a CPS hearing I've got to jump on in just a few minutes. So, let me, so Commissioner Moss, I know one of your questions was, what was the cost of testing? Because you've got, what we summarized for y'all is three possible ways to look at employee testing or pre-employment testing. And so, Cindy pulled this together this morning for me. Right now, they, it's mandatory testing under the CDL guidelines. There are certain times that our road and bridge are having to be tested with their CLs. It's $57 a test, and on average each year, we're spending about $450 simply on the mandatory drug testing of the road and bridge folks. Now, Lisa and Cindy, if I'm wrong, y'all speak up, please. So, if you're talking now about expanding, you know, more robust drug testing, then that's the numbers you're starting with, 57 per test, and then the averages would just go up, I'm sure, substantially, but that's up to you guys to look at and project, so.
Hey, folks, can I chime in here?
Yes, sir.
On, on that $57 a test, that's for a split sample CDL test. Just a regular drug test for a non-CDL employer should be less expensive than that.
Do you have a rough number, Larry?
I've heard in the $30 to $40 range.
Okay.
Can I just make some comments based, and see if I'm correct in my thinking here? We have currently a policy, or the state does, I guess, for CDL testing that we are required to adhere to, and so it's already in place. Is that firstly correct?
It's already in place.
It's already in our, in our policy. We don't, we don't have anything about CDL.
Well, no, road and bridge, we're already testing road and bridge, but there's not a policy on that in the policy, in the CDL policy.
I'm sure. There's not a policy, what?
We've, we've been random testing road and bridge employees for, for years.
We, we have it.
We are.
The county has, probably.
The county road and bridge employees have, are randomly tested.
But we don't have a policy for that?
No.
No.
They follow the federal guidelines.
Yeah, but they're, they're following DOT guidelines.
Yeah, they, they have one down here to test.
So, the DOT policy is being followed by the county for road and bridge. So, or anyone, not just road and bridge, but see, any CDL who's driving a county vehicle, is that correct? That's being followed now?
Well, road and bridge is the only ones that had, that have a CDL.
There's not a law enforcement is CDL, or is that something different?
No.
Oh, no.
Okay. Okay, so CDL is dealt with? Is that correct, or is there something missing?
Well, we've got, we need a policy for it. We need, we feel like we need to put something in our HR policy, and we actually do need it, because it's been very loose until now. They've been following the guidelines. Now, we need to articulate. And there are some, some ways to pick and choose within there. Larry, you can speak up. Some options the county has, and that's what, in the draft we provided to you guys, there should have been some highlighted areas.
Here's the reason for standalone CDL policy. If the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration were ever to audit you, and you did not have a standalone CDL policy, you could face fines.
That seems pretty clear. Yeah, seems very clear to me.
And so, so what are the, what are the decisions we need to make on that policy?
Just to accept.
CDL policy or on the general?
On the CDL, firstly on the CDL policy.
Sure.
What was your question, Mr. Jones?
What are the decisions we need to make on the CDL policy? Becky's going to tell us.
It says that pre-employment testing is optional. Larry, you want to speak to that?
Pre-employment alcohol testing is optional. Pre-employment drug testing is not optional. You must do it. That's the reason that they developed this clearinghouse that all the counties are trying to figure out what the heck to do with. But like I said, the, there are four tests that you must do: pre-employment, random, post-accident, according to some certain guidelines, and then reasonable suspicion. In order to do a reasonable suspicion test, your supervisors have to have obtained an hour of alcohol and an hour of controlled substances training. But pre-employment alcohol is an option. You don't have to do that.
The other ones that are mandatory are for drug-specific. So, the proposed language we have for y'all is all applicants for employment in CDL positions are candidates for transfer or promotion to such positions, are subject to screening for improper use of controlled substances.
Let, let's back up just a second. He, he said that, I, I don't know how to say your last name.
Macasio.
Macasio, yeah. I think I asked that the last time. You said that the, the ones that you must do, the suspicion-based testing is a must?
Yes.
So, there are four.
For CDL holders.
For CDL drug testing is the most.
CDL.
And remember, he also said that we have to do it for them, but in a little while, you guys would be contemplating if you want to do suspicion testing for your general employee population. But there's a lot, there's a strong standard of training for the people who are going to be the, the overseers of suspicion, whether it's your elected official or department head or a supervisor. And we have to be able to train, make sure they understand what they're looking for, and then do validation of the training. It has to be ongoing proof and validation. So, there's a high standard if you're talking about doing it for all 100-plus employees in the county. But you must do it on the CDL. Richard Wooton's trained right now.
Yes. So, right now, though, let's just, let's just, that way I don't get confused. I don't know anybody else, but let's just talk about the CDL policy.
Right, that, yes, thank you.
Yeah, that way, there's no, not all employee, we're not talking about that. So, and then we say, okay, that way, that way I don't get lost. But this policy, you, you had some language. Is that what you said, Becky? Because the one we have, I believe, comes straight from TAC.
Right. Well, this actually is the one that Larry has put out across the state to help folks with this. I'm just saying that the standard is test for controlled substances pre-employment. If the county wanted to add alcohol testing, that would be an option the court could have for pre-employment testing.
That's true.
For CDL.
Correct.
The, the pre-employment for alcohol, what would be the purpose? I mean, that's, that's a little bit. What do you mean by that, Rebecca?
I mean, you could, you could require them, they, they take a test, and I'm going to tell you, their urine test is not going to be a bit of good unless they consumed that morning or the night before. You could order a hair strand test, which goes back, you know, 180 days. But then you're saying, you know, hey, if you can, what, that's the whole point. You could say that you're not going to hire anyone if they test positive for alcohol on a urine test, which would mean they used alcohol just prior to applying, you know, coming in for their first day of the job. You could say that. I'm not telling you you ought to. I'm just saying, making sure the county understands that when we talk about pre-employment testing, right now, we're only talking about controlled substances. But if the county wanted to rule out folks who consume alcohol in the, go back 180 days, you could go back the day before. It's whatever. I'm giving you guys all your options.
I, I don't think we should include the pre-employment testing.
For alcohol.
For alcohol.
I don't either.
Okay.
Me neither, me neither. Makes no sense.
Let me throw, let me throw one more thing in here. You can't use a hair sample for CDL.
Okay.
It's got to be, it has to be a split sample urine sample.
Okay.
Thank you, Larry. That's why you're on the phone with me.
So, is that, is that the only issue on CDL, is whether you need pre-employment alcohol testing?
Well, we need to make it a standalone also.
So, Larry, was there anything else the commissioners had a vote on? I have a highlight for medical review officer. That person would have to be designated for the county. That's on page 12 or 16.
Yes, you did.
We don't have one of those.
Well, I saw two people today on, in court that would probably qualify for that, you know, one of your doctors.
Okay. So, I guess the commissioners would need to designate who that is?
Yes. So, as far as the, the written policy goes, you have to designate an MRO. You have to designate a DER, which is the Designated Employer Representative. That's Lisa. And, and really, that's just it. You've got the laboratory in place that I'm assuming comes to you to do the urine sample, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, y'all are fine.
I'm going to have to, Matt's going to take over. I've got to go to a CPS hearing. I'll be back as soon as I can.
Okay. So, so just for clarification for right now, what we were trying to do is, is move the CDL drug testing into a standalone policy outside of the HR policy, so that we could isolate that and apply it strictly to the CDL licensed holders.
But I, I'm, I'm lost for a second, though, because we, the HR policy is, that you're talking about is, is our Commissioners Court policy, is a county policy. The, 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 HR don't set policy.
Right.
The Commissioners Court sets the policy, right? That's what you're talking about, Judge?
Yeah, I'm just, from what I understand, we've got to have this CDL drug policy in place for the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration to, to meet their audit requirements.
And it's not part of our personnel policy. It's a standalone policy.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. So, isn't that pretty simple to do? It's already written, it looks like.
Yeah.
It is. We just, we just need to adopt it.
So, what do you need, a motion?
Yes, sir.
I moved that we, I moved that we adopt that. I, I have moved that we adopt a standalone CDL policy as presented.
So, on the, on the Agenda Item, it says on the CDL drug and alcohol policy. So, we need to delete and alcohol from that Agenda Item. Is that?
I would, I would leave it there, Judge, because alcohol plays effect into random post-accident and reasonable suspicion.
Good point, good point.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Peter. Go ahead, sir.
I made a motion to accept the, the CDL drug and alcohol policy for Lano County as And I'm sorry, I didn't read it, but it stopped me there. I didn't read it enough to say, is the alcohol not included in the policy as presented?
Yes.
The, the pre-employment alcohol testing is not included, right?
Yeah, it is. You made the right motion.
You made the right, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay.
So, I, I'll second if Lisa doesn't have anything else to add.
The only thing I added was the clearinghouse.
What's that?
I added language on the clearinghouse.
But it's already in this policy, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second.
All right, go to motion in a second. Any further discussion? Being on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, any opposed? No. Motion carries. So, okay, Agenda Item 12, Discussion/Action, Schedule Budget Workshops. It is that time.
Excuse me, Judge. We have to do the all-employee policy.
There's another part of 11.
Go ahead.
There's another part of 11.
Yes, there is. I'm sorry. And the all-employee drug policy for Lano County. Lisa?
The all-employee policy, court needs to decide about the blood alcohol concentration of .01 to .08. It's .08 in our current policy. So, I didn't know what y'all wanted there.
Well, let's back up a minute, Lisa. The, I think what we're looking at, there was originally three potential policies. One was pre-employment testing. Second, that's not in what's being considered, it looks like. The other one was suspicious testing, suspicion testing, and the other one was accident testing. That's what we had those two, right? So, we had three. We've taken out, we haven't been, we're not being presented with pre-employment testing for all employees in this, right?
That's up to y'all, if y'all want to include that in the all-employee policy or not.
And I think in reading, just going back to that, in reading what was submitted by Becky, there is some concern based on the, I guess, Inspector General or whatever's input, that unless, if we miss any pre-employment test, there's a potential liability to the county if a department doesn't do that, or a person doesn't do that, there's a problem. Is that understood on that one issue?
Well, I understand it, that we, if we have it, it has to be across the board.
And you can't miss anybody.
Departments can't pick and choose if they're going to do it or not. If we do, everybody has to.
Right. And then the concern is, could we even track it well enough to be able to know that's taking place? Can you?
I don't know how you could.
The other concern is, how do you force another elected official to do it?
Right. I mean, that's, so that becomes, that becomes an issue as to why we, you know, we would have difficulty with that, drug or pre-employment testing across the board. So, that's why you've taken that out, I think. Is that your view?
I took it out for discussion for y'all.
That's probably not something we want to pursue at this time, or maybe even ever.
I don't think so.
Right? Okay. So, I agree. Okay, so we're down to two issues. One is suspicion testing, and the other one is accident, right? And that's what you've presented to us today.
Yes.
Right? And it makes, it seems to me to make sense that on both of those, the actual use, like implementation of those policies, where if a department head is concerned about somebody's actions, behavior, et cetera, stated, that they do have the opportunity to address this. And I think that that makes sense for us to have a policy for them, to have the tools to be able to do so.
They've got, they've got to have had the training, correct, Larry?
I had unmuted, but yes, they should have, it, it's not as technical as the hour for each alcohol and drug under CDL, but they should have, if, if you're going to implement reasonable suspicion, the supervisor should be trained in how to recognize signs and symptoms.
Right.
Which makes sense.
I'm really worried about this suspicion-based testing.
I am too.
The accident, the accident testing, that's a no-brainer, post-accident testing, but I, I'm really worried about this suspicion-based testing. You know, the, the commissioners don't have employees directly under them, so we wouldn't have that issue. But, I mean, I think that's a lot to put on a supervisor, with the CDL, but that's a lot to put on a department head or supervisor, to actually be, in, in some way, be some sort of officer. I know there wouldn't be, but, you know, that's a lot to put on a supervisor or an elected official.
So, let me ask you this, though. I mean, we're at, at middle state, so if the supervisor sees somebody who is working for them that is incoherent and not working for them that is incoherent and not functioning appropriately, they could just fire, I mean, you turn around and fire them, I guess, because it's an at-will state, without any testing of any kind. I mean, that's, that's possible. Testing at least gives them an opportunity, I guess, to determine what the cause of this dysfunction is. But, but you're right, I mean, it's a difficult thing for the supervisor to be able to come up to speed, to be able figure out, what do I do next?
Right.
I have a question for Ms. Lisa. Lisa, can you hear, I have a question. The, the, the employee that's under the influence, assuming they're under the influence that's doing these things, they also, as the commissioner indicated, they could be fired because they're not able to do their job, correct?
Correct, and we have done that before.
Uh, so you wouldn't even have to address the issue of intoxication or, uh, drug use, it would be more streamlined because they're just not able to function in their capacity in whatever, whatever capacity that may be, correct?
Yes, and like I said, we, we've had a couple of employees in the past in those two situations that we just.
And it also prevent us from being charged with, let's just say we have somebody going into a diabetic shock and they're acting different.
Right.
If it turns out it's diabetic issue, they can, that can be handled and we can control that, not control the outcome, but at least investigate the outcome to make sure that that was what it was and not a adverse drug reaction because of illicit use or improper use or alcohol, correct?
I would say so, yeah.
Okay, I mean, it, it lends us a lot more protection from a charge of a violation of their, um, a violation.
Of their dismissal.
Unlawful termination.
And I guess the only concern I have on all that and always have is that in Texas as an at-will state, you can fire anybody for any reason. But I think Larry, I've heard from you and your HR comments that whatever, whenever that takes place, the, the reasons, well, the, that there should be documentation.
Sure.
For that, because even though you're at-will and you can fire them for everything, you could be claimed to be discriminatory. I guess if, but it's pregnant, or old, or black, or whatever, that, that can come back to, to be a problem because you didn't state somewhere it was a performance issue. Um, is that, is that correct? So documentation by department heads on whatever they do on this is important.
Yes, you definitely have to document this. And, and you mentioned the, the diabetes or insulin shock. You have to be careful with that one because you're verging on HIPAA territory. Uh, that's personally protected information, so tread a fine line on that.
Right. But let me ask you this, Lisa, do we get letters from department heads now when they put somebody on warning or termination or what have you? Do you get that in the personnel file?
I get very few, only if on the, only if they are on the edge of termination, I'll get a phone call and I'll, I'll tell them we need documentation. And that's when I get it.
Okay, so we're relying really on the department heads to make sure they're doing it properly, which.
Department heads and elected officials are who we rely on for that.
Right, and are they, I'm not convinced frankly, that, that it's being done as properly as it should be.
I, I don't think so either, but, but I stress that to them, document, document, document.
Right. Okay.
So what we have on the agenda now is for post-accident, is all that we have left, correct?
Correct.
Lisa, what, what was, what do you think on this suspicion-based testing?
Well, like I said, we've had a couple of situations where we've let employees go. But that's.
It needs to be in there.
That's if we can get them some training. I mean, they may not want to mess with this, they just might have said, might say, I just want to let this person go.
That's, that's the truth, and we can't force them to take the training, correct?
Right.
Unless they're an employee, it's a department head, elected official. But, uh.
That, that, yeah, you're right.
It seems, it seems to me that, that the at-will opportunity for termination, which exists on the statute is adequate.
I think so. What do you think, Commissioner Moss?
The what?
What do you think about that?
Well, I mean, it, it's something that, I guess can be addressed, uh, how Lisa said, they can let someone go, it was at-will, or Mr. Jones said that. Does at-will, so it, it, it's just, I still think it's a lot to put on a official or a department head, and then they don't have to follow it, that, that's, uh.
We can't enforce it.
That's exactly right. So now we're back to just post-accident, correct?
I think so. Yes.
Ju- judges, if I may, but this doesn't prevent, like, the sheriff's office from having their own internal policy, correct?
As far as I know, it does not.
Correct, okay.
So the, the post. Go ahead.
Cindy, do they have their own internal policy, or do you know?
I'm pretty sure they do.
I don't know if anyone is on, is Mr. Neff on? I don't see anybody from Sheriff's Department. Um, I, I don't know if they have that or not. Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Well, I was saying, on the, on the post-accident issue, uh, anybody driving a county vehicle, is of course, that's where it would apply. Uh, should be standing, I think there's some decisions on that, too, isn't there, in regards to the the various limits that we have concerns about, Lisa?
Sorry, what was that?
On the, on the post-accidents, have some decisions of concerns about the amount of alcohol blood level limits, et cetera, that we need to decide.
Yeah, but it's not, not with, it doesn't have to be driving a vehicle.
It can be, it's use of any equipment.
Right. Hey, yeah.
Anything that involves medical treatment is what it says right there, so yeah, it doesn't have to.
So we can, we can ask the S O if they have their own internal, internal policy, but that's, that's not going to impact the post-test?
No.
So we just need to adopt the, the post-test procedures? Or post-accident, actually. Is that correct, Lisa?
Yes, the post-accident and the blood alcohol concentration level.
And ours is currently point oh eight?
Yes.
I think that's the legal limit, I think we should leave it at that.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Larry, what is, what are most counties have their set at?
You know, Judge, it, it depends, I've got some counties that are zero tolerance policies. Uh, you test positive for alcohol regardless of the consequence and they march you out the door. I have others that it ranges from point oh four up to point oh eight.
We're talking, we're talking strictly post-accident, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yeah, uh, what is, it needs to be any trace, really, if there's an accident and they got alcohol, think about that.
That's, that's what I was getting at, is if you're.
Yeah.
I read your mind.
I mean, we're, we're saying you've got to be legally drunk before we take action.
Right.
When you're operating county equipment.
Yeah. So, the, the point oh one is, is any trace, is that correct?
Yeah, any detectable amount, yes.
I mean, that's what we're trying, is drinking while working.
Yeah, I mean, basically. You, you know, you're looking, you're looking at somebody doing a two-beer lunch and, and coming back, and I guarantee you, they're gonna be under point oh eight, but they're still gonna be under the influence.
That's not okay.
That's not okay.
So.
So, are you gonna, are you ready to make a motion, Commissioner?
Talk to me?
Can I, can I throw one thing at y'all?
Sure.
Okay, i- if, and I know we're talking regular employees here, but if you look at what they do for CDL, if a CDL employee tests point oh two five, then they are subject to being removed from the safety-sensitive function for twenty-four hours. If they test point oh four, then they're in trouble. That's, that's when all the federal stuff kicks in about the MRO and the tests and this and that, so I don't know point oh fours, if that's a reasonable limit or not, but, you know, that's something y'all have to decide.
According to what you said a while ago, that means they could drink one beer.
Yeah. Depending on how much they weigh.
Yeah. Sir?
No, I said depending on how much they weigh.
Yeah.
And they go on body weight and on how much food's in their stomach and.
Absolutely.
Level, the whole nine yards. Basically, if they go eat lunch and they have two beers, they would cop probably, if they got tested after that, they would probably come back at around an oh two or oh three. Because it hadn't fully absorbed into their system yet.
I don't think we should have any trace about calling while we're working for the county.
I agree.
So we'll say point oh one?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with that, nobody should be drinking on the job anyway. Um, so this, I'm through a scenario, so this is either an accident in a vehicle, a county vehicle, or an accident falling downstairs in the courthouse or something.
Anything.
Something, something that, that is, and if that happens, now, you know, then they get tested and then there's a certain level, and then does workman's compensation come into play here, Lisa, or what's, what, how does that play out with this?
Yes, but if they're under the influence, workers' comp wouldn't cover it.
No.
So, so workman's comp doesn't, doesn't come up, when they're under the influence, at what level?
Any.
At, any level?
It, it, workers' comp won't pay for alcohol concentration or horseplay, either one.
Okay, so it makes sense then, if that's the case, that we should have zero tolerance. From a point of view of workman's compensation issues, injury issues, right? Because, uh, we don't want to encourage, we, I mean, the, the workman's compensation should kick in if it's an accident, and if they've done it with all, it's just a pure accident, not alcohol-related or drug-related. But it works. If workman's compensation does not apply, that creates a problem for the employee, they're not gonna get compensated appropriately, it won't be approved, et cetera.
They don't need to be drinking on, working.
No, that's why I say, so we want to encourage zero, zero tolerance. In that case, from a workman's compensation point of view, accident, and then you want to qualify for workman's comp, can't be drinking, so it's a zero tolerance policy.
Actually be a point oh one tolerance policy.
Right.
Okay. Okay, is there any other impact we have on this, what about? You know, what about, so any other benefits that are paid? Lisa?
Any other what?
Any benefits that are payable, that would be disqualified if there is any substance abuse identified post-accident? But what about our, what about our vehicle insurance, does TAC restrictions if it's proven that there's somebody's driving under the influence on a county vehicle, just dreaming up stuff?
That could play a factor, yes, but it's, it, it depends upon the, once again, on the alcohol concentration.
Right, okay, well, I think it goes back, let's go to zero, then, or point zero one, I think there's two factors come into play potentially to have any kind of level of alcohol content. So is that the only other?
So we would need a motion to adopt a zero-point-one alcohol limit policy for post-accident testing?
Yeah. I guess.
Matt? Oh, hang on one second.
I mean, yeah, I think y'all can articulate it, we can just make the order match that, so conclude it, and then we'll figure out how to make the wording come into this appropriately. It's just gonna do that right now.
I don't know if y'all heard what she said, we, we would, we would approve it like this and then make the order match it.
So if y'all want to say point zero one, um, BAC, then we'll, we'll put that in here and make it set.
Does that make sense?
Is that the only issue, Lisa, that we need to make a decision on? In a policy?
Well, you, you took out that, the first two policies, correct? We're just gonna do post-accident.
Yes, ma'am.
We're just gonna do post-accident, right?
That's it.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to, see if I can say this. Instigate a, a, a post-accident drug and alcohol policy testing with a point zero one um, tolerance.
Sounds good.
Does that work?
Do we also need, Cindy, a motion, or can we do it now, for you, for the vehicle use policy to be amended accordingly? Cindy, because you know, we don't have this in the.
It's not in the vehicle use policy.
Well, doesn't, wouldn't, wouldn't this cover everybody then, in that case?
I, I think it does.
Yes.
I think it does.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Commissioner Jones.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Moss. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. That concludes agenda item eleven. Thanks, Lisa, for all your work on that, thanks.
Thank you very much, Lisa.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you all, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Larry, too.
You're welcome, thank you all for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay, bye-bye.
Lisa, we really do appreciate your hard work on all this.
Thank you.
Now we come to agenda item twelve, discussion and action, or scheduling a budget workshop. It is that time of year when we will start working on those. Cindy, do you have a timeline? I know we get the chief appraisal, certified appraisals by July twenty-fifth, but we need to be well down the road on that by then.
We need to have it adopted by the fifteenth of August this year, so we lose out almost a, a month of negotiating time. Um, so once we get the request, we need to send out letters to the department heads and get their requests back, so we can put together some kind of format to present to commissioners what we're looking at.
So that, that will go out either tomorrow or Wednesday at the latest. We'll put those out.
Tomorrow's Wednesday.
Or, I'm sorry, Thursday is the latest. Sorry, got my days wrong. Sorry, got my days wrong. So.
So we really need to wait till we get the request back to set a workshop, right, or not?
Well, we need to give a drop dead date to get the request back.
Oh, okay.
So we can set the workshops.
How, how long does that normally take?
Cindy, how long has it taken in the past, a couple of weeks?
Yeah, we usually give them two weeks, but I would say that we could probably have our first workshop by the second court in June.
That's what.
That's the, that's second court.
That's the 22nd. Yeah, 22nd.
That's in four weeks, seven months. I know y'all would have to put it together then also.
Right.
But they're going to get it back to us, and then we're going to have to go back and forth probably to try and make sure they're justifying what they're doing. So that gives, that gives them two weeks to, to get it into us. That gives us a, about a week and a half to, to look at it and make a decision on what we're going to present to the court.
I got a recommendation. It may be a schedule budget workshop. I don't know if I'm in, inside this agenda item or not, but I would recommend a zero increase.
I think.
Pretty easy to figure out.
I think in light of the pandemic, that everyone needs to understand that we don't know what we're going to get back in taxes. We don't know what the county's looking like. I think everybody did a great job at scaling down and scaling back when we had the, the COVID-19, and we've all learned to do without. And we've learned to work with limited resources and limited personnel, and it's going to be very hard pressed to justify any type of increase at this point.
I agree.
Judge, in the past, on these workshops, schedule them, we had, at, at one point, we did, um, I know when Judge Braskin was here, a couple of years in a row, we went through every budget, every line item. Uh, and it, it helped a lot, it really did, because, you know, it's, it's easy to put a little in here and there, and then you forget about it the next year, what it was for. So as far as a budget workshop, when we schedule budget workshops, I wouldn't mind having several of them, or, or just like a whole day to go through them and, and go through every line item in every department.
Well, that's, that's what we did last year, remember?
Yeah, we did.
We stayed there and went through it line by line, and I think that's, that's what we've got to do this time.
I agree.
Yeah, but what, what I'm saying is we, we should cut them this time, instead, I mean, we, I know we cut them some last year, but even more.
I think we're also at a point to where there are things that would, the county must fund, and there are things that the county may fund, and we have to look hard at, at what we may fund also. I mean, it's, it's to the point now that we, we may not can fund everything that we funded in the past.
Now, much of this is going to come on the, what is our total, how does Senate Bill 2 impact us with the three and a half percent cap? Are we going to reach that three and a half percent cap? And a question I have on that is that in the SB 2, there's also an ability, that if there was a disaster declaration that the eight percent level still can be maintained, and I don't know whether this declaration of COVID qualifies for that. So, but that's beside the point until we know what our numbers are. We need to know where we're at first before that is even come into consideration.
My, my goal is to stay at, at or below the 3.5 increase.
Right, right.
Judge, what?
What we just heard about is we've got to think about what's going to happen with the medical EMS and what have you. The, the, not this year, if it goes to summer 2022, but that's going to come soon.
Right.
Judge, what did you schedule like on, on that week? We have it on the 22nd. Could you, we meet on the 3rd also, if needed?
I, I think we should plan on meeting on the 22nd and 23rd, just to, to go through it and, and as diligently as possible.
While it's hot on our mind, we can go through it two days in a row.
Probably a good idea.
Cindy, we have. Meeting person.
I'm sorry, Cindy, well, we have enough information from the in regards to tax, did you say, by then or not?
We have some preliminary numbers, and it looks like new construction alone is going to give us about 300, between 300 and $350,000 on, on new construction. Increased revenue.
Which doesn't impact the three and a half percent cap.
Correct.
Well, I'm going for that, two day effort to work it out.
So we'll schedule for June 22nd, June 23rd. I'd like to do that in person.
We do.
That's fine.
We'll have to, we'll have to make plans on where it's going to be. The, I know the district court and the county courts have gotten significantly, significantly behind, and the courthouse and courtrooms are about to be utilized as much as possible to try and catch up on the dockets. So, we'll figure out a place that's safe to do it and do our best to accommodate everyone that wants to attend. And we have to remember also, by, by June 20, 22nd and 23rd, the, the whole thing, the whole scenario could change, and it, the county could be open again.
Or not.
Yeah. I say all that to say, it's a fluid situation. It remains a fluid situation today.
As, as far as meeting rooms, Judge, if the district courtroom is not open, what about at the East Annex? Is that place big enough for us all to go in there and, and stay separated? Linda?
Um, Judge, you'll need to come down here and look at it, you and Gilbert, and decide on that, because I'm, I'm not, I don't want to make that determination.
Okay, is there anything on it being in the county seat? Cindy, do you know?
I don't think there is with the workshop.
Okay.
We'll need to check on that.
Okay.
Because we've had meetings here at the Extension Office, too, when, when they were renovating the courthouse, so.
And if, if maybe we could move it up to the community center also, I mean, we.
There you go, and think about that.
We can, we'll make it work, y'all. So.
In a budget workshop, Judge, you know, there's only, there's not going to be, there wouldn't be even be 10 people, as far as that goes, because the five of us and whoever we're talking to at the time would be the only one to come in if we need.
Yeah. We'll, we'll make it work, but we're, we're def, we're, everybody's good on the 22nd and 23rd, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Do we need that as an action, or are we just, do we have to set that?
I don't think so. I think you, any meeting you want to.
Oh. Okay, then that is settled, and we'll move to Agenda Item 13, Commissioner Jones.
Hey, yeah, this is, uh, this is the subdivision regulations. It's a piece of the subdivision regulations that we've been working on, we're kind of doing this a piece of the time, and this comes under what we're calling Article 2, General Subdivision Regulations, and we wanted to get input on a particular issue from the Commissioners Court. The, um, this, let me just pull it up on my. I'll be right back. This, uh, this article, trying to separate what we're dealing with in the subdivision regulations. Maybe I should wait for Commissioner Moss to come.
Yeah, let's, hang on just one second.
Hey, Judge?
Yes.
Before we get to this, could we do the EST, ESD 2, because Charity's been waiting an awful long time.
Absolutely.
And, and this can take a long time to go through this, so if we could just go to, to number, what is she, 15, real quick?
Charity, are you on?
She's on.
Oh, there you are. So Peter, are you okay with us dropping that?
Yeah, yeah, sure, go ahead, go ahead.
Can y'all hear me?
We can hear you, waiting on Commissioner Moss. He stepped out for one second.
Okay.
Thank you for joining us, Charity.
You're welcome.
All right, yes. Okay, go ahead, Charity.
We're going to Agenda Item 15 to do the ESD real quick before we get into the subdivision.
Okay, so I, I believe that Linda has probably forwarded to y'all, um, a ESD copy of our audit report via PDF. I have provided her with y'all's bound copies, um, for everyone. Um, this is our fiscal year ended 9/30/2019 audit report. Um, we approved this at our May 18th, 2020 meeting. Um, this year, the Lano ESD Number 2, which is in the Bacana Dam area, we increased our net position by $5,398. Our ending net position was $277,378. Of this figure, about 56% is unrestricted and 44% is restricted for investment in our capital assets. We have paid $12,001.7 on the engine principal for the fiscal year ended 2019. For fiscal year ended 9/30/19, our depreciation allocated to this engine was $75,293. Um, our auditor reported in all material respects, the respective financial position of the government activities and the general fund of the district as of 9/30/19 are in accordance with the county principles generally accepted in the United States of America. And that is about the summary of our report.
Any questions for Charity?
No, it looks like the opinion of the auditor says it was a good, clean report.
Yes, sir.
Good.
Commissioner Moss?
Oh, ma'am, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Charity. I do appreciate you hanging with us for so long.
No, not a problem. It's been interesting. I don't get to do this very often.
Thank you so much. Good work.
You're welcome. Thanks. Bye bye.
Commissioner Raske, you want to make a motion?
Uh, we don't. It's just presentation.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, then let's drop back up to, or move back up to 13 with Commissioner Jones.
Okay, yeah, Item 13, again, I mean, this is, again, we're working on the subdivision regulations. We've had other meetings. Uh, we're kind of picking away at this a piece of the time. Under Article 2, we've got Article 2 and Article 3, and Article 2 is the one we want to talk about today, and it deals with it, in, in the bold lettering at the start of the article, it's the General Subdivision Regulation, and it says, this section refers to real property that has not been laid out in an existing platted subdivision currently on file with the county clerk. So this whole section is to do with brand new subdivision requests. It is, the Article 3, we'll talk about another time, deals with, uh, those that are existing subdivisions that are on file with the county. So this is only to do with brand new subdivisions. Uh, so there's been some edits made to this. Uh, Christie and Matt worked hard trying to figure out how we can incorporate the new statutes and the regulations in it, and Matt will ask you to talk to this if you will.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. All right, so when last we met in a workshop on this, Bob Bass was present, and he informed us at that time that he had just rewritten the Van Zant County regulations, and he forwarded those to myself, Christie, and Commissioner Raske and Jones. And so, we specifically looked at the approval procedure that Bob had incorporated into Van Zant, which is the current legislatively mandated procedure, and as we've talked about, under the new legislation, we have, you have three basic actions that you can take upon the submission of a completed application, and that is approve, approve with conditions, disapprove with conditions. Bob's Van Zant procedure is probably the biggest change that we've made since we met back in early March on this. So what you would see, if you look at pages nine, 10 through, I think it's, um, 20, you'll see some sections that we had struck, and we, we saying, we've submitted these to you so you could compare, if you so desired, prior to today, that we've struck those sections that we had talked about back in March, and have replaced those sections with the language that you would now find in, starting on page 17.
Matt, let me stop you there. The, the copy on our tablet does not show page numbers, so you might want to refer to.
Doesn't, I'm sorry, very sorry. Okay. So, what, if you, um, what has been struck is, um, the filing deadlines and hearings, subdivision approval process, the application review period, and these are found on pages nine, well, 10, 11, and 12. Pardon?
There's no pages.
And they don't have pages on these.
Hey, Matt, we don't have pages.
Yes, I'm trying to figure out how to, um, okay, so.
I think what you're looking at is the revisions are about, uh, let me see, three pages from the end, uh, where you talk about the Van, the Van Zant.
Yes, three pages from the end of what y'all received. Y'all only received, I see what y'all got, okay. There's the review and approval of final flat, parentheses, Van Zant version. Are all of you there?
No.
Okay.
It's just after all the ones that struck out, uh, I think it's probably four pages from the end.
I, I am now, yes, sir.
Okay, Linda, are you there?
Where, where you, where it says scope of review?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes.
Okay. That language that Bob sent us has replaced all the, all the language that is before that that has been struck. So it incorporates everything, and it lays out very clearly for the applicant and for the court how it must be done so that the court has clear guidance and the applicant has clear guidance of what the options are. It, it lays out that if we, if you believe that the subdivision is approved, but there are certain things that still need to be done, or some modifications, if you will, then we have, you have to fill out a document that specifies what the item is that needs to be clarified or added, and, well, not added, but, uh, clarified, and cites to the specific part of the regulations and/or another statute that it might involve. As we discussed back in March, if it's disapproved with conditions, the chances are that the applicant is going to be able to, um, correct the items is probably pretty slim, and at that time, I used something along the lines that they wanted to put in a, you know, a septic system along the banks of one of the lakes that there was just no way LCP was ever going to approve. Or a nuclear plant, if you will, something that's just beyond the keen, but they can figure out how to pigeonhole it into the application process, so it comes before you.
But, uh, Matt, I think on this, as we discussed in our meetings, committee meetings, the wording in the, in this piece is pretty much pulled from the statute.
Yes.
So we're not making up our own words, it's by the statute.
Yes, it comes, I mean, it's, I'm holding the statute right here, that's the approval procedure 232.0025. And Bob has, has done a good job of laying it out in a way that is a clear guideline for, for the applicant and for the court. And doesn't allow any daylight between what the legislature wants us to do as accounting and what the applicant has to do as a applicant.
Right. There you go. Yeah, pretty good.
Thank you.
Sorry, it took me a minute to get it up there, y'all, I was working on it.
So, any other questions?
There's only, is Christie not on today?
She's in here.
She's right here.
Okay, there was one, oh, okay, there's one, if you'll go back, and this is a, let me look here, it's the, it's talking about groundwater availability, Matt?
All right, so we've received, uh, Christie received word back from the Texas Water Development Board that we are in a groundwater, you know, about 25 different counties that have a, we're in a groundwater district.
Right.
But we are not, we don't have groundwater availability because of our topography, our geography. So this, this section would never, at present, it doesn't apply. But that doesn't mean that if God were to throw up the blanket of the land, that somehow or another, it might apply. So, it, we'll never have that, but.
But it needs to stay there.
But we can leave it in just because that way it tracks the statute and everything else.
Okay.
But we'll never have this occur for us to utilize that as a means of denying an application or sending it back.
Yeah, it was just what, a note from when we had met earlier on. Right.
I, I sure, I sure hope it never applies.
I do too.
Well, yeah. Um, any other questions? We just wanted to bring this to you so that we could get a sense of the court as to whether or not to include this in the final version that y'all will be voting for or voting on when it's finally presented. And hearing no real objections, we'll make the changes and add it to the final version. And one other thing, um, we were hoping to present Article 2, I mean Article 3 today, but we had a hiccup, um, we started, I, I looked at the law and, and wanted to check on something. I told the commissioners that I think, I want y'all to be aware that I don't think we will have any change on the notice provision that's in Article 3. Article 3 being the revision of subdivision plants, there is a notice provision. Uh, we're going to leave that the same, it's going to be my recommendation. So I'm hoping that the next commissioners' court, we can quickly go through Article 3, Article 4, which is uh design standards and roads, and then Article 5, which is, um, I believe we've discussed, but I just want to cover that with you again. That's the uh section having to do with um bonds and variances and notes. And then, um, and hopefully we can also get into, and then the last thing will be for Christie and I to make sure that the appendixes track the regulations and that the proper forms are ready for the public to use going forward. So, I'm hoping we're probably one, if not two, meetings away from having a final version for y'all to consider.
Man, y'all, it's piece by piece, but y'all are making progress.
Yeah, thank you.
We are so grateful to Christie and Matt for all of it.
Real good.
It's been amazing how they've really done.
Thank y'all for your time.
Matt, did you, uh, when you spoke to Bob, uh, did you, um, did you get the, the final kind of direction?
I do.
How we implement and have hearings?
I'm sorry.
No, hearings and public information and all that, steps we need to think, once we get commissioners' court agreeing, generally?
I do have that, Commissioner, and I'd like to present that uh through an addition to, uh, in our next meeting, but I do have something from him.
Okay, good, thanks.
Okay, so that was discussion only, uh, on Agenda Item 13. Moves us to Agenda Item 14, approved submission of grant application for energy defense and authorized support letter. Uh, this was the indigent defense that Michelle from the Burnett County Public Defender's Office offered up with the Texas Indigent Defense Commission. She talked about it a little bit, Cindy's done some, I think Cindy's crunched some numbers, Cindy, do you have anything?
Well, I hadn't really discussed it with Becky, I see her initials are on the agenda, does, does she have something she was gonna present with that? I didn't, I didn't see any backup with the agenda item.
I, I didn't either.
The only, the only thing that they did was they, we got a, a message from Michelle and they submitted it with, to the deadline, under the contention, or under the condition that she understood that the counties may or may not support it. It was something that I told her we were still working on, when she's told us, notified us that she had submitted the, the application. So she submitted it, but it, it was not with any, I guess, approval of the, of Lano County or anything, she just wanted to make sure she got it in.
So she did send me an email, I've not talked to her on the phone since she appeared before the court, I think, um, the last time, and asked if I would write a letter of support. I didn't know that she, you guys were putting it on this agenda, I didn't realize that. I thought it was just a general letter that she'd asked Sunny and myself and other county attorneys and district attorneys to provide to their initiative. So if I was supposed to have had that, I was not aware that it was for this agenda item. And I think my name is on that simply because I'm a prosecutor and this falls right in the name of, the agenda defense is right what I deal with every day, so. But I can certainly do that, I can follow up with Michelle and find out who, I thought it was going to be addressed to her, you know, globally, so.
Cindy, when, when we spoke last, was there, they, they provided some numbers, but I think the numbers are different than what you have?
Well, I had, my only concern was, and I'm still waiting back from the Indigent Defense Commission, I kind of look at the net because there are other grants that are provided. We get a reimbursement on a formula grant that I don't think was included in the numbers they provided in that big plan that they showed us. Um, and that's anywhere between eight and $15,000 a year, depending on what our costs are. And then the other thing they didn't address was this year, starting with the new Senate Bill 2, our increased cost in indigent defense are going to become part of our um tax rate calculation. So we'll be able to recoup any increases going forward, providing we don't belong to one of these regional public defenders offices.
Oh.
Yeah, there's, and it, and the other thing is, is if, if we go with the grant, then it's going to call for office space. So with, with everything that we do, it comes with a cost. So we need to, we need to get all of the, I guess, the, the pros and cons, if you will, of why we would do this, to look at before we, before we send them any type of support letter.
Well, and we need to look at real numbers.
Yeah.
You know, what, I mean, what they show Cindy has to be comparable and equivalent to what we're doing now, correct Cindy?
Right, now we will, on, on paper, it looks really great at the beginning. The only thing that concerns me is um, all of the funding is based on court costs and fees. That's where all this money comes from, and we all know what's happened to the courts in the last few months.
I know.
Prove it this year, um, it'll probably be funded two years, I'm assuming in the, the cycle of the legislature. But we may, if they pull it after the first two years, there's going to be a much bigger gap to participate in that regional public defenders office that we'll have to come up with.
Well, that's my concern, and also she had mentioned that they are going to have to, you know, hire more staff. Um, so that'll have to be factored in as well.
It's, it's a trade-off on what the efficiencies
Right.
the public defenders office brings to the county. And we need to, I mean, it, it's one of those deals where I'm just trying to keep you all aware of, of where we're at and what's going on. But it, but again, it's, it's no, no negative connotations towards the people who are doing the, the public defenders program now for us.
Oh no.
This, this was an opportunity for us to maybe explore a way to, to reduce the burden of indigent defense by 50%. So, but if, we've got to have true numbers on it, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I agree.
And our district judges are behind whatever the commissioners' courts decide to do, they can see plus and minuses to both programs. The only thing they did mention was that there'd be um uniformity in the processes coming out of regional public defenders office versus contract attorneys. Because everything that they deal with in the court system would all be coming from the same group of people and the same kind of reporting requirements.
So they would prefer to see a regional type group?
He wouldn't want to say, he didn't want to say one way or the other, he just said he could recognize where things would be more uniform in all four counties if they're all coming out of the same office.
I can see that as well, so.
What?
And it could eventually reduce some of our court costs and, and jail costs if they're getting out of jail sooner than they would be. If it takes longer for somebody to go up there and visit with them.
Sure, I just think this is dialogue that's going to take some time.
What, what we need to do is do a swat on it and look at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, and see if, see what we can identify going forward. We just, we're, we're kind of under the gun to get it done, since she's, she's done that, and we need to let them know one way or the other. But again, COVID-19 has kind of thrown a, a kink into communications with everybody, including their office with the state on the, on applying for these grants. But we'll, we'll get that, we, and I, I'll pledge to you guys to have something for you on the 8th.
Okay.
So that had a discussion and action, but it was really not really an action. But I can see no action will be taken. Uh, so should we table that? Would that be?
Probably should.
So, so wording would be, the wording would be the same, then you can table it, but if it, anything's going to change, you'd have to.
Yeah, you might want to remove it.
Remove it, yeah, remove it.
And then you can just put it back on however you want to.
Right.
Judge, and one thing, didn't they have a resolution, a participation resolution they were going to provide?
Bernie? Yes, I think so Cindy.
I think she said that, I think that lady.
Yeah.
She did too. Okay, so do you want me to make a motion to just remove Agenda Item Number 14 for now?
If you would.
Okay, so maybe.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Moss. Any further discussion, being known all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it, motion carries. We've already covered Agenda Item 15, presentation only. Uh, that brings us to Agenda Item 16, discussion action relating to Lano County Attorney's Request to Purchase Replacement Vehicle for Investigator Environmental Control Section. Becky, are you still on?
I am, I am, so, thank you to Commissioner Moss and Roden Bridge. They jumped into the buy board system and found Caldwell County, which is where they buy, Roden Bridge buys a lot of their vehicles evidently, and found a um four-by-four crew cab, all said and done, four-by, um, like I said, four-by-four for $29,811 rollout. So, seems like a very reasonable amount, less than the 30-plus that I had put as a, a mark for, don't go over that. Y'all should have gotten that in your packet.
Yep.
You can't see him, but Jerry Don's smiling Becky.
Yay, I can, I can see him, I just put myself off.
Okay.
Y'all can't see me working.
So, Becky, you got a small trade-in value, haven't you, as well?
Yeah, very small, I can't remember.
Couple thousand dollars or something.
Hundred and fifty bucks.
We had to pay them to take it, I think. Thank you Court very much, we humbly um respect and honor that, those decisions for y'all to share those funds from the county. It means a lot to us and the safety of the guys that are out there trying to get the job done, thank you.
We haven't approved it yet.
Oh, well, I'm just, thank you for letting me get this far, I'm hoping we get across the finish line.
I'll make a motion, we approve the specs uh for the county vehicle.
I'll second.
We've got a motion to second, any further discussion? Being known all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
You can say thank you Becky.
You're welcome.
Judge, should I come back at next court with a budget amendment to transfer those funds?
Yeah, we're going to need to, yes ma'am.
Out of the tax notes, correct?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you Cindy.
All right, Agenda Item 17, it's Commissioner Moss.
Uh, I guess y'all have seen the road easements that Matt uh worked on. Uh, well, Matt did, not just worked on, he did them all, and um this is for out there at Rio Lano, uh, where we can uh hopefully get started on rebuilding that bridge. Uh, we had one meeting where uh, I don't remember if that was a commissioners' court meeting, Judge, or that was just us, talked about what all needed to happen uh to make sure this was all documented, so FEMA could, would uh hopefully reimburse a little bit of that. Uh, this is one of the steps to build the detour. Uh, this is just to prove the easements, um, the property owners have all said they would sign and do whatever, they, they were really easy to get along with, so. This is uh what it is, we have to, uh, as anywhere, we got to build a road and everything to go through there and uh for protection for the constituents driving the road and the livestock and everything else, so. There's a, Roden Bridge has quite a bit to do, but uh, we have to approve these first. Matt? Do you have anything else?
Uh, I just want to point out that the way this will work is y'all will approve these uh, approve this action. Uh, I got Commissioner Moss, if I'm, it's still my impression, we'll approach, we'll go to the landowners. The landowners will sign these documents. And then when we are on the cusp of beginning the work, uh, Judge Cunningham will, will sign for the county. Is, the easement is for 90 days and then file, and then it's a month, a month after that. Uh, but we won't um become obligated under the easement to have insurance until that point in which the work is about to begin, and Judge Cunningham will sign these, these uh road easement documents. Um, there'll also be, I guess, some insurance, Jerry Don, we have to get?
Yeah, I haven't got that far yet, um, I don't know.
But that's, and that's contemplated within the easement agreement, that we have a, a policy in place um while the work is being done.
I, I think that, uh, we, uh, I haven't talked to anyone, Cindy, do you know that we may have insurance that covers this sort of thing already? I don't know that far, I haven't gone that far yet.
Excuse me Jerry Don, you're cutting up.
I said, um, I, I thought that we would probably already have some sort of eas, some sort of insurance that covered the county um on this road destruction, for these uh, county or the, or anyone, that covered easement. Uh, I know you haven't seen these, as far as I know, except for on here, but uh, I think that we already have an insurance that will cover us. Linda, do you know, no, that wasn't us down there on that broad branch, where was it, that was a state.
That was text dot, but we had to do an easement uh on the Johansson property, so I, um, you sent that folder back to me Cindy?
Yes.
Uh, I'll have to look through it, I don't, I don't, it's getting a separate policy, do you?
Uh-uh, I don't think so.
I don't think so, I think it all covers it.
I don't think we did.
So right now, it's just an action to approve the detour easements, correct?
Correct, yes sir.
Okay.
And y'all can see, these have not been signed yet, I'll, I'll take them to the property owners and have them, get them to sign them and look over them, what have they got to do? Get them back to. get them back to, if this is approved, and get them back to the judge. So whenever we do decide to start construction, the judge could sign them and we'll go forward.
It's a, it's a long process to do it in, in accordance with what FEMA says to ensure we get paid. But we appreciate everything that Matt and Jerry Don and John Fowler, the engineer, have done on this to give us, keep, keep us going down the road on this.
Absolutely. And this needs to be done. I know it does. I will go ahead and make the motion to approve the detour easements adjacent to River Park Drive in Rio Leno while the bridge on Johnson Creek is under construction from the 28 Jane flood.
I'll second.
Got a second by Commissioner Moss. Any further discussion? Being known, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I just have it. Motion carries. Yeah, make a, I need a, there's nothing to discuss in executive close session. So if somebody would like to remove that.
I, I do got one thing to say, though, on, on the, just, I, I've had a couple of calls asking about, I guess someone looked at the agenda, asking about this school land and stuff. So I, like I stated in the past, the commissioner's court had approved for me to kind of oversee that and, and bring anything in for, before the court. So if y'all would, whoever's putting this on the agenda, kind of removes the school land stuff.
Will do. Okay. No, and I just, I just want it on there as a placeholder in case something happens. Well, we got to get everybody together. We don't have to go to an executive session and I don't anticipate going into executive sessions. But I, but it's, it's nice to have that, that comfort level there. And I, I think that comes from being on school board for so long that we always had it. And we didn't, we didn't always use it. But you, you've got that if I need to keep you guys aware of something.
And, and Judge, on the same note, on the comfort level, I've been on commissioner's court a long time also, and, and it's just the opposite because we haven't had it on there unless there was something to talk to. So it kind of makes me nervous about it being on there without something up. So, but as far as the school land and the solar farm lease, please don't put that on there anymore. I'll, I'll, I will do that if needed.
Noted. The only, the last thing I had is public announcements, and I missed it earlier. But just so everybody understands, L C R A is starting to do a lot of their clearing, starting up in Buchanan. Susan Patton notified me of that last Friday. I don't know if we sent it out to you all. I know they're starting up.
I didn't get anything.
Okay, I'll, I'll get that to you all. Like I say, it's starting up in Buchanan on their right aways. I don't know if Susan's still on the call. Yeah.
Power line clearing?
Yeah. Susan, can you, can you touch on that, just so everybody's aware?
Yes. It, it's just routine right away cleaning. We notify the property owners directly and then we just want to let y'all know in case you get calls from people seeing the crews. I can send out to all of you what I sent to the judge. Just, it's the list of contractors who'll be doing the work. So you'll know what trucks you'll be seeing out there.
Okay, that'd be great. Thanks.
Well, the next commissioner's court's on June.
Did you want to meet, did you want a, you'd ask for a mess, a, a motion to remove 18, 19? Do you want that?
That's correct. I'm sorry.
I'll make that motion to remove agenda item 18 and 19.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it. Motion carries. Next commissioner's court will be June 8th.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.